Frank, I'm thinking it might be in one of the other folders. I'll check as they come around.
All right, I didn't see it.
Yeah, that's the BMO where I know it was.
So, all right. Good evening, Litchfield residents. Welcome to the October 22nd, 2014 School Board Meeting. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any revisions?
Oh, I thought you were doing it.
Yeah.
Salaries and benefits, we will not discuss it tonight. We will have the final cost figure. Probably early Friday. Definitely by end of Business Day on Friday, so it'll be in next week's board packet. And Holly and Frank were running the numbers. And the level of confidence in the final number was not where they wanted it to be. And it has to do with some issues in the 13-14 data as it was rolling over.
Mm-hmm.
Frank, is that, and Holly, is that an accurate statement?
That is accurate.
And rather than put a number in front of you tonight that, that may be inaccurate, they wanted a chance to go back and check that old data. Last year, you know, new HR director, new BA, the data rolling, the data was rolled over and that whole process in a very complicated system took time and we were running it. And this, this time around, you know, we have more experience on the table on that piece. But it was more of the 13-14 data piece that really was the issue. So, I apologize. We expected to have this a couple of days ago. And we just saw some more anomalies than we're comfortable with and decided it would be best to give you the most accurate data on Friday rather than less accurate data on Wednesday. It means we'll also have to make some revisions with respect to some timelines. But we should be able to hit November 12th as the day that we have a final number and budget to move forward.
Yeah, we'd actually worked in an extra week, I believe, just anticipating if we had some issues, we can move it around. So, we'll be okay. We'll have it Friday posted to your board backup for next week. So, we'll give you some time to take a look at it. And we'll also have a summary of numbers for you as well.
So, can we ask that on that budget, that it not be a wish list budget? That it be more in tune to what the superintendent and the managers? So, it's more of a realistic budget when we get it? Not a one that has numerous large numbers added to it for no great reason?
You want me to actually earn my pay?
Well, I, I just don't want it to come in the way the last few budgets have come in.
On this one, it says, oh, good. Yes, we can.
If you're gonna-
I would like, I would like you to see them all, but what I can do is bring them in priority order.
It, you know the budgets I speak.
Yeah.
It should not come in like that if it's getting an extra week of tweaking by, by the managers. It needs to be a fairly accurate budget with a need. When you come back a week later as a superintendent, it shouldn't be greatly different, I would, I would hope.
It's, well, remember that, that my comments last week, that when, when the time period when I normally would have sat down with the budget managers and taken, had some good conversations about what the priority items are, is that the timeframe in which my contract was the issue. And so, having not been able to do that then, what we said we'd do is kind of bring everything forward and, and have, you know, superintendent and board input at the same time. I can come with a, with a, my recommendation on a bottom line number, I can come with, and I can also come with a list of prioritize. Because in the end, by the time we're talking about that, you're gonna have a good sense of the final budget number. And-
Well, I mean, we, it's a budget that we're not getting today, so we're going a week later on it. So, it needs to be, the conversation that we would have next week is a conversation of giving you direction of where to go for a superintendent's budget. So, it, it needs to be, that budget needs to be a little more fine tuned.
I can do that.
For one, it's the largest budget. And it's gonna take a little bit more time for all the, all the members to get through it and understand it. So, that's one of my requests. I mean, you guys can-
There are some things that we do know. I mean, with the number of, we have roughly 119 FTE LEA members who are, will next year be getting a step increase, so that we have almost 40 people who are at the top of the scale. And they will, some of those will get a small increase, but basically a step increase is about $1,500 a year. So, we know that this is gonna be about $120,000 in step increases. We'll have some increases in licenses. And the healthcare guaranteed maximum rate we're going with is-
7.5%.
7.5%, which we know equates to, given the same people with the same coverage, is an increase of roughly 75,000? Was that the number that we?
It'll be in the $70,000 range.
Okay.
With status quo.
And we will have some, some perils required by IEPs. So, we're starting off with those things as definitive. So, we'll, we will have some serious conversations about it. And there are a lot of budgets that came in flatline, and we expect to look at those next week. The budgets that came in, in basically level funded were GMS, LMS, LMS Athletics, school board budget, SAU budget, finance office budget, HR budget. So, I think those will be fairly simple. We'll get all those done next week. Holly and Frank are also not here next week, so the timing for that, I don't think we need them for, for that piece because those are fairly straightforward. And then we can have the, the full position conversation next week as well. So, that would be on the 29th. That would be just two more full board meetings after that. I think we'll be fine. If we hit those two marks. And I don't see any reason why we shouldn't, quite honestly. Frank, will we be able to have a total bottom line figure for next Wednesday? If we have salary and benefits done of requested?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we pretty much have that now. We should have it.
So, we should be able to, starting next week, really be looking at bottom line and where we are pretty holistically.
Summary of non-public from October 15th, 2014 Non-public Session. Mr. Yorke made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of October 8th, 2014, as written. Mrs. Lepore, second. Motion carried, 400. This now brings us on to CHF's athletic field presentation.
Good evening. How y'all doing?
Good.
We have a request to ask the school board to approve $2,500. Ask the selectmen to, $2,500 on the advice of the school board. I'm not sure if I'm phrasing this correctly. But for a feasibility study, we've had a group of people been looking at improving the athletic facilities. And this particular phase would be looking into prospects of putting a synthetic turf field out on the front field. And this $2,500 we're requesting from impact fees would give us surveys, architects rendering of what the project may look like. At that point, we would have the tools necessary to move forward and start trying to find out if there is some interest in the community, people to be potential contributors to this project.
Does this allow us to use the, the field more often than we do now?
Sir?
Will it allow us to use the field more? Like today, you don't use it because of, you're worried about the, the field itself, so.
Right.
Okay.
So, the advice of our grounds crew is taking about all the beating it can take. You want the synthetic field, you can pretty much play on it as much as you want to for 14 or 15 years, and then it'll probably start degrading at some point. But it's not, you can't overplay on it. Materials that compose the field start deteriorating after anywhere from 14 to 17 years. But the average life expectancy is 14, 15 years.
Now, how'd you come up with the number for the annual savings of $15,000 a year? Because I take it you'll still utilize the other fields?
We still will utilize the other fields. But we just figured that over the long haul, that's the average savings. That's what pretty much the industry, not just one vendor, but the industry estimates. That's how much you save. You got, you're talking about cutting grass, painting fields, top dressing, fertilizing, aerating, I mean-
You'd continue doing that on those fields, wouldn't you?
On the other fields.
Yeah.
On this particular field, there would be no more maintenance to speak of, no major maintenance. Which is very minimal actually for a 14 to 15 year expenditure. So, I mean, it, we've added so many sports since the school was built. And I think what brought this really to the front is the fact we added lacrosse. And there was really nowhere for them to go. And so, that started getting the wheels turning. Where, where are we gonna go? And so, last year, direct folks were kind enough to let us kind of have a one-year reprieve to play there. If we have something maybe going in place, maybe they'll give us a two reprieve till we get this, this field up and running. Again, we're in a feasibility stage, but we're just, we're trying to find out, is it something that, that we can do? And we feel like the $2,500 investment is pretty minimal.
So, if I could jump in for a second here. In the spirit of full disclosure, I was involved in some of this work with John on the committee as a community member. So, I do have a little knowledge about this before I was sitting here tonight. And I definitely support this from, obviously I have more time to consider it than everybody else perhaps has had. But I think there's a, I mean, it's a good idea, I think, to explore. There's some potential to do something with it. And I, from my time volunteering with the group, there are some things we just have to do in order to move it further and that you need some money to do it. So, there's some questions there. We started looking at grants and even talked to some of the vendors and, you know, they ask for different things until we get them. We don't have enough information, I think, to move it forward and really, as John said, even decide whether or not it's feasible or not and it should move forward. And of course, a group of volunteers doesn't have money to expend on the school district's behalf, so.
Thank you.
I was invited to attend the meetings and work with the group as well. And, and so, I, I missed the meeting with Rad, but other than that, I've been at every other meeting that we've, that we've had and been doing some of the background and organizational work and put the PowerPoint together and things like that. And clearly, if we can do it, it's a good thing. The program is roughly four times as many hours as a single field that we, that we have now. And to replace it in 14, 15 years would cost probably less than half what it would do to, to put it in again. That's, that's kind of the industry standard. So, there's some significant benefits to it. I think it's worth looking at. I really do. And it's a pretty small amount of money from impact fees that would go into it. And then, then the decision would be, and the tight lines are gonna be, the timelines are gonna be fairly tight, you know, in terms of, of how they move forward, how it's gonna be funded, all that sort of piece. But if they don't get this, then I, I would say, if they don't get approval on this in a very timely manner, that it's off the table for the potential for next summer.
Yes, sir. You're right. That is correct.
Do we know how long it usually takes the selectmen to, to know our impact fee request? Because they probably have to ask their lawyers. They have to have a meeting themselves.
I could ask Gordon for an opinion.
I agree with that.
Pretty quickly. I think the rationale is, when the high school was built, it was built with a certain number of fields. When it opened, it only had two grade levels of students and it only had a certain number of sports. So, the, so the number of students has increased, the number of sports that need fields have increased. And we're literally now, don't have enough field. We're gonna struggle with, without, you know, more access now that we've added, you know, the number of sports that we have, so.
Do you-
And likewise, we want to, this idea is for a community field. This is something that everyone, everyone who participates in athletics and even recreational events could get a benefit from this. You know, there's not enough recreational fields in this, in this community. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know if there's any lighted fields in this community. Are there any lighted fields? This, again, it's feasibility. This field would be able to do soccer, football, lacrosse. And if you look, I believe, in the PowerPoint, you'll see it also could have two softball games going simultaneously. So, not only would it be something for the athletics, but it would be for the whole community when not being used by the school. It could be utilized as actually a, don't get me wrong, it's not gonna pay for it, but it would certainly pay for the upkeep. We could rent it out for soccer tournaments, lacrosse tournaments, and softball tournaments. And again, with the lighting, the ability to push the snow off, which you can't do on a, on a natural turf field, you'd have more accessibility, more months out of the year.
Because what's, what would you be playing with snow cover that you would remove?
It snows here from pretty much October to the end of April. What I've seen, you know, all bets are off. So, you could push that snow off there. And if somebody wants to have a soccer tournament, they, you know, like a select soccer tournament in February, if you get the snow off, you can, you can roll. And they do that in Massachusetts. So, a lot of the places where they have turf, they just push it off and play.
Early spring lacrosse.
Sir?
Early spring lacrosse.
Early spring lacrosse.
Ran into it last year.
So, you mentioned lighting. I take it your proposals and estimates you have include lighting?
Well, right now, we're just trying to get this $2,500 released so we can get some surveys down, get an architect.
Frank, I'm just curious. I mean, you must have an estimate as far as what the cost is. I'm just curious if it involves lighting?
Yes, sir.
Bleachers? Or are we gonna take those wood ones, just move them around?
You know, we would like to think that the actual place to play is more important than the spectator's comfort. You know, so the kids need a place to play.
If you have any, if you have any tournaments, that's gonna be a consideration. I mean, tournaments involve sitting.
I hear you loud and clear. And again, if I gotta choose one or the other, I'm gonna choose the, the venue first. We've kind of thought about a Phase One and a Phase Two, with Phase One being turf and lighting. And then if we get that accomplished, then possibly a Phase Two would be some other things on our, on our wish list, you know, such as nice, modest, but, you know, adequate bleachers and possibly a, you know, restroom. You don't have to roll it away and that kind of thing.
Do you have any information on injuries? The difference between turf and, and natural field? Is it about the same or?
It's actually a little bit less on the field turf. Again, a lot of people hear artificial turf and they think back to AstroTurf. And it was pretty, pretty rough out there. I mean, if you, if you laid out on AstroTurf, you're gonna leave some hide behind back in the old days. But this is different. It's, it's got more of a natural feel and it's, and it's the way it feels under your feet, but also when you, when you hit the ground, it's just, it's got a lot more absorbing power. There's actually less injuries on the new field turf than there is on natural grass. So, that's a good thing.
I'll make a motion to request $2,500 in impact fees before the selectmen to conduct a feasibility study.
A second.
Can I ask on your, on your schematic drawing, diagram, the brown, is that brown part also synthetic turf? Where you got your baseball field?
My understanding is yes.
Let me look at that picture.
It's a, it's the Gale schematic, John.
Oh, the Gale schematic, but that's not what ours would look like. But, because that would kind of stand, have it kind of look peculiar on a soccer field. They can make it whatever you want it to be. But again, again, you would have, it would all be gray in our, in our-
In our, in your, okay.
If you look at the next slide, John, you can actually see the double.
I, I came to the conclusion the two are not tied to each other.
Correct.
As far as the schematic and where you guys were looking to put it based on the other next picture, so.
The side is the same side the current natural field is, obviously.
So, the sides will be the same as the current field?
It'd be actually a little bit wider. And, and the reason it's wider is so we could play for tournament events, especially for the younger ages, if people wanted to rent our facility to house, to have a tournament, you could go crossways and have multiple games going at the same time instead of just playing on one field. That's why the width would be more, can you, look at, in your mind's eye, if you could see the picture, you got more width.
No, but my question, I, I thought it wasn't long enough right now for lacrosse.
No, it'll be long enough. We got all that worked out. There's enough space there to put it all.
But existing, it's not long enough.
The girls' game, they say, is, is not quite. And then the thing is, the goalposts that are in now, they can't pull them out. But if you put in this, you've gotta put in a different kind of goalpost. It's for-
That would give you the length.
Housing for the goalpost.
If you played sideways, had two games at one time, do you, do you mark the field? Can you still mark this?
Oh, yeah.
And just washes off or?
Yeah, he draws me lines on it. And you can have permanent lines on there that will, that will stay the life expectancy of the field. And they can even, you know, weave different colors of the fabric in there. There's a lot of ways to do it. If you wanted to have something drawn just for a short-term event, there's, there's special paint.
You have some big fancy cougar right in the middle.
You could draw that too, yeah.
So, there's actually three types of markings. There's a permanent markings, there's Mr. Parrish, an injury. And then there's, there's sort of seasonal paint that will wear off of it, you know, and you may have to redo in a season. And then there's what's referred to as event paint. So, if you look at the stadium in New Jersey where both pro football teams play, the end zone is blue on a Sunday night game and it might be green on the Monday night game. They just wash it off.
Right.
Paint it the other color and it's done for the next night.
So, are you thinking the permanent paint would be the football field and then?
I would think, I would think football, soccer, and lacrosse probably would all be-
All be permanent?
Permanent paint. But the temporary paint would be if you wanted to break something in for an event or even for a season, you know, crossway.
So, why, why are we going to impact fees on this? Why are we dragging this out for three or four weeks? Why don't we just have Brother Frank, Frank and-
Brother Frank is the well, the bucket's going deep in the well.
We are in a default budget. And-
I think you're adding three weeks to the process for $2,500.
We, we could transfer some fees from academic transportation, athletic transportation, I'm sorry.
You have no guarantee that, that they're gonna say yes. So, you're right back here in three weeks.
Would it be possible to approve and go ahead and do it? Request the fees. If they come, we use and pay for it. Otherwise, we pay for ourselves.
I mean, you do that. I mean, I mean, I, I think that, I think that, you know, going to the, to the- The selectmen for $2,500 for impact fees, I think you gotta, I think you may have a 50-50 argument in that at best. I understand the logic behind what you said. The school is small. We've grown. We've added sports and things like that. So, I think, I think in the end, your, your, your argument may carry the day. But I don't think your timeframe, based on what you were just telling us, is legitimate in that, in that process, so.
You may be right, Mr. Yorke. I, I just looked at the long-term planning for the, for the, for the town when I got here. And there were some stadium things mentioned years ago. Stadium seating, stadium press box stores, stadium lighting. All these things run the long-term plan of the town. And I thought, with that said, it might be a door to knock on, try to get the impact fees.
I think you'd much be better off knocking on that door when you have a plan in place to go where you need much more financing than $2,500.
But, but see, sir, we can't really go any further till we get this done.
I understand. Well, I'm just saying, I, I'm thinking the school board's giving it impact fees now. Can approve it, tell you to move forward and, and again, leave it up to the administration, which is the good part about being a school board.
Right.
Is that we can leave it to them to figure out where to get it and let you move on with your process. Even though they'll tell us they don't know where it'll come from. But they take a dollar from each line item, they'll get the $2,500.
Frank, do we know how much we have in impact fees right now?
That, that's, part of the issue would be what CHS balance is for impact fees. And that's pretty much next to zero.
Oh, is it?
So, if we, we'd have to support this as a district-wide. And I believe the balance for, between elementary and the middle is somewhere, I'm gonna say around 102,000.
This is mine then.
Is that right?
K to eight, I think, is the elementary, which is a K to eight.
The elementary is, yeah.
It's much more than that.
240, maybe?
Yeah.
Well, there are changes.
180, 240, somewhere around there. Changes monthly.
But I think we should at least ask them, but then-
I can get it for you.
Also approve them to move forward in the event that it doesn't come out.
I think Mr. Yorke's points are significant. There, there is a, a time constraint here that a faster yes may make a significant difference.
I'm just looking for a yes. Be fast, so just give me a yes.
Doc, you wanna change your motion then to?
Just approve it?
Just approve it?
Then go after impact fees?
To approve moving forward with the study?
Second.
And then you can go after impact fees?
Go after, I mean, to get reimbursed on it.
Well, the vote of the board is fine. We really don't need the board's vote to do that if there's a proper appropriated line that we can find for such an expense. If you know what I just said.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I don't believe there is in the budget, but I guess we could-
I don't believe there is either. I can't answer that right now because it wasn't something that I looked into. But that may be an issue that we don't have a line available to us to appropriate the money through, through a line transfer. We can stretch the definition of some of the lines, but I'm not sure we have that line appropriated. And I can look at that. I mean, if the board's motion is to do that, we'll look at it and we'll see.
Couldn't you look at it as field?
How about Campbell's fund?
Huh? I'm sorry. I didn't catch that.
Couldn't, I mean, couldn't we look at that as something under athletic and field or, you know, maintenance, field improvement, whatever? I mean, I know that's a very long stretch of your-
See, if we can, that's my point, is I'll have to look at that and make sure that it fits.
Well, so now we're, so, so now we're in a quandary of, if we approve the motion and give you permission to go forward, and you go forward and there's not a line item, then you must get the approval from the, from the selectmen. Or there's no way to pay your invoice? Is that basically what you're saying?
Well, you can't create the invoice until you put a purchase order in, which means the appropriation has to be funded prior to.
Why don't we just table this till next week? And then you'll be able to look and see if there's a possibility to do that and then we can revisit it in the next meeting.
Or you can vote the motion, should there be a proper line for the appropriation to transfer the money into it to go forward. And if there's not, maybe you could vote the alternative would be then to proceed to the selectmen for the, for the fund, for the-
District one, this is next year's.
Do this year's- Motion would trigger one or the other. In fact, we don't have the appropriation at the, at the operating level.
A third motion there?
To instruct the, the BA to find the money to see if he can transfer it.
Right.
If not, then go ahead with the request.
Yep.
Second.
And we'll know that right away.
Any more conversation?
I hope not.
I don't have a fourth motion on that.
We could second these $2,500 ones for like half an hour.
So, the selectmen are meeting on Monday. So, if we, if we call Jason tomorrow, maybe ask for some time on their, for their meeting at 6:00 next Monday, maybe you can get that over to them and have them consider it on, on Monday and maybe vote. So, we'll have a decision on Wednesday for both, both items on that. So, I would, you know, another one of those small tasks to add to your busy schedule.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I'm staying. 5-0-0. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll bring the community forum. Superintendent comments?
We skipped over a bunch of things.
What's that?
We skipped over a bunch of things.
I'm sorry, correspondent. I did, didn't I?
Oh, boy, those correspondents. You blame me for that one.
Well, correspondents, they were, I'd say approximately 12 to 14.
Did you get them all?
I did.
I sent them all.
I think I did.
Yeah, I sent them all to her. And I'd say they were 60, 40, 50, 50, and they were all in reference to Blizzard bags. And I would, again, 60, 40, 50, 50.
There were 10, four, and five against.
It seemed like they came, everyone at night was against and everybody in the morning was for it. So, and different direction.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the board, now that we have a new member to sign, I need a new signature from the board on the code of ethics and the code of conduct.
I will say that one of the things that seemed to be a common theme, whether they were for or against, was extending the day. And.
Seen as a good thing or a not good thing?
I believe that that would be a great compromise, that you extend the day for the first three days. So if you lose three days, you extend. And then after you've lost three days, then a Blizzard bag can pop up. You extend in school hours so that everybody's, you know, and you'll have to figure it out when to start that. But I believe that, you know, I believe that would also answer the, on the requests of the LEA to not have Saturday school. And I think it may satisfy the board that may not be so pro Blizzard bags. That kids being in school and teachers being in school is the appropriate answer to that process. So.
Another common theme, which we can't do anything with it this year, but next year when we look at the school calendar, was getting rid of some of those days in the middle. Yeah, do we really need four days off in November besides the Thanksgiving holiday? Probably not.
So John, you're saying like the first, if we get three days, snow days, we automatically start lengthening the days of school?
Right now, the situation is that we've used, first, if we want to use Blizzard bag days, we have to enter a sidebar with the LEA as part of the existing contract. So it would have to be something, an arrangement that both sides would be agreeable to. In the last three years ago, Blizzard bag days were used first, and then the four additional days in the calendar were used second. The last two years, we've used two days, two of the additional four days first, then the next two days missed were Blizzard bag days. And then a day missed and a Blizzard bag. So with that combination, we would actually have to lose a seventh day in order to go outside those two. Uses. And I'm fairly open to a school lost day, Blizzard bag. I mean, going two school cancellation days and then two Blizzard bags, or one and one, one and one, one and one, either way. Actually, well, we've got four school cancellation days. So we'd have to lose an eighth day before you get to making time. So it's just an atypical year when it has to happen. If you want to, if the board at some point does vote to approve Blizzard bags, I suspect that the LEA would be open to either of those options. Two and two, one and one, or one, one, three times. You know, but before we, before we find out.
How many minutes? So say you started an April vacation. Do we know how many minutes you have to increase the day in order to make one day?
You have to add.
I think it's six hours, right? School day, excluding lunchtime.
The high school day is more minutes than the other two schools. But what you'd have to do because of busing is essentially add the amount of minutes to all of the schools. Otherwise, you're going to have kids waiting around for buses or buses having to. So if you lost one day, that's 360 minutes of instructional time at the high school. So if you had 60 days of school left, that's six minutes a day. So you'd add a minute and a half to each block.
For one day.
For the 60 days. For one day miss, yes. And if you miss two days, then you'd have to add three minutes a block for 12 minutes for 60 days. And typically, by the time the storm days, the worst-case scenario is you have a power outage that causes a cancellation in May. And now you have to make up 360 minutes over a relatively short period of time. Doesn't happen very often, but.
Well, that's the thing too. Like, that's why I was asking, John. So you're saying like, we lose, let's say November 12th. Right? It snows, we lose a day. So we're going to start increasing the days.
We could take, you don't have to start it right away. You can.
Well, the problem would be that a month later, you miss another one. You're going to have to start adding.
Well, I understand that. I mean, you can make a decision. That's why you said three days. I mean, if it, you know, I mean, adding a minute and a half doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But if adding five minutes to each class over, you know, 60 or 90 days, you know, kids are in class. They're learning and the teachers are teaching and, and I, you know.
You know what I'd like to see next year? Start the school year off by adding 15 minutes to each day and then roll it backwards at the end of the year.
Well, I think what we should do is, I think on a broader scale, the school board should put a subcommittee together of a school board member, some citizens, some staff and whatever. Because I think we should look at the starting and ending times of our schools. Because as I've been talking to Frank, I believe that, you know, if you take a look at Litchfield and the fact that we have 10 buses running around our town. I mean, you know, a place like Nashville with the same sort of square footage is probably using six or seven buses. So I think the fact, the way our schools are staggered to start and end, creates a scenario where we end up spending a couple hundred thousand dollars more for buses than is absolutely necessary. And if we would just take a look at our, our times of when we start schools and stagger them on a 30-minute start time. You know, 7:50 or 7:20, 7:50, 8:20, then the buses will have plenty of time to drive our enormous town and pick up as many kids as they can. And still get them to school on time. And so I believe that that's something the board should strongly consider. And looking at putting something together and having that conversation sooner than later. And so if it is something that we are going to make a change, we can begin that process of even begin breaking it out and having that conversation with the community in February. At deliberative. Because I think that's, I think that solves a lot of the problems with even if we add time to the days on the schools. You know, it's still very hard to do that today with the fact that we have LMS closing at two, CHS closing at 2:20. You know, then GMS closes around three. I mean, you know, that's when the buses are needed in those things. So I think that's what, that's what creates the issues. And I also believe that'll allow us to, you know, if through that process, extra minutes are built into the day as just a general thing. I know in Manchester, they did that and the Board of Education approved it. So they went to school for 174, 175 days instead of 180 days because they extended their school day. Which allowed for the flexibility that was necessary to do what was, you know, necessary. So I think there are things that we can do if we just think a little bit outside the box and everybody's open to, to the processes that are necessary to use our resources in a very effective way and at the same time maximize the education process for our kids.
Just a bit of background information. LMS and GMS, I think, have identical numbers of minutes of instructional time in a day. Cole Harbors, the high school is, has the most instructional minutes. The other two are the same, but there are different minimum requirements under the 8306s. So middle school has to have more than elementary. So we're well above the requirement in high school and I think significantly above at elementary, not so much at middle. In fact, I think we added five minutes to the middle school schedule while ago, maybe four or five years ago. And before that, they were right down, I think, to within a few hours of just barely being over the requirements. So you might be able to take a look at that and see what we can do. The simplest solution would be to add some time to the middle school day, which would then give a certain amount of hours at all three schools. So since we can now do calendars based on hours rather than days, that would give us more flexibility.
And we also received the email from the parent that was very concerned about the high absentee rate, in this case, at Campbell High School. Where. About 30 some odd days and a majority of our teachers have been, already been out two or more times. So this is from a parent who's concerned about the teachers, again, being, missing from the classroom and stuff.
So it'd be interesting to know what the fact is.
It would, yeah.
Delegate it. Go over here.
Right over here. I'm so sorry.
Director of.
But I'm going to be a relatively simple question.
That handoff occurred at about 7:40 this morning. Any other correspondence? Rule of draft minutes? October 15, 2014? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
Aye.
Four, zero, one. School board comments?
Actually, I.
Superintendent comments?
Ask at the alternate.
That's because he has some mail comments.
I had the great fortune to meet with Mr. Brindle before the meeting tonight and sort of catch up where we are, what's ongoing, what some of the issues are. And when I got to see her, my first comment was that being a former school board member seems to be agreeing with her. And it reminds me of the amount of time and effort and occasional consternation that being a board member brings with it. And I just want to thank the board members here and elsewhere for the time that they put in. It's an important function. You know, the schools are the biggest investment that the community has and in many ways, I believe, its greatest asset. Moving forward and the work that you do is important and makes a difference. So thank you to the school board.
I do have, I do have something. Last year, my daughter designed a music book for GMS. And I believe it was paid for by the PTO for the third and fourth graders for their music class. They reached out to me again. My daughter redesigned the book and we printed the book and we delivered it. However, they hadn't gotten approval from the PTO. So they were going to run it through the school purchasing process. It was about a $155 purchase. I told them that they really can't do that until I had a discussion with the board. And the board understood that what had occurred. And then I also encouraged them to try to have a conversation with the PTO. But it's there and so I don't know exactly how they're going to resolve it. But if it goes through a PO, then when we get that disclaimer at the end of the year about any income paid to a board member, then we'll have to answer that question as a yes. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew about it today rather than tomorrow.
So they plan to bring it to the PTO?
They must, I think so, but I have no idea. Reading between the lines, I think they'd much rather just do the, just do the PO. But being a board member, I knew the easier way was through the PTO. Because it would create less issues for everybody involved. So I don't know exactly where it's at. So.
Maybe the PTO can proactively reach out to the school.
Well, yeah. We have.
I'm only a member now.
Oh, you're not the president anymore?
I stepped down Monday.
Why?
Especially with budget season, that being in the chair, that may be just a little bit of a conflict. So. I am still going to be heavily involved with the PTO. And I'd be more than happy to, for you, John, to bring it up at the next meeting. Unfortunately, it's just Monday, but I'm certain it can be brought up.
Ms. LeBau has the invoice.
She's normally pretty good about that and I'm sure she'll probably bring it to us.
I actually also had a comment. I want to reach out and actually thank some of the staff at LMS. I've heard on a couple of different occasions that some of the staff members volunteered to work with some of the students that needed pairs, that wanted to do cross-country. I think Ms. Anderson is one of them, but I think these were staff members that have no running experience and they volunteered to run cross-country with a couple of students that needed to do it so they could participate. So I just want to thank them. That's obviously a great thing and that's kind of one of the things that makes this feel great. I also want to take a second and actually recognize Mr. Burke for jumping, I guess he did as chair, and kind of helping us steady the ship and hopefully keeping us on task, on topic and on time. I know you're probably busy as being the chairman on Budget Committee, formerly, I guess, formerly the PTO president, soccer coach. I'm sure you're pretty busy. So thank you for stepping in. That's your job. One last thing. I also wanted to clarify something I said a few weeks ago that apparently upset someone. I got a thumbs down this week.
Yeah, it was your turn.
Regarding, I think it was the first time I was actually named in the school.
An accomplishment.
Frequently, but to be, actually, I wasn't named, but it was clear who they were talking about because it was me. When food service was here, I inquired perhaps, maybe I misstated what I meant, but I inquired about the menu and if there was opportunities to improve the menu and maybe include some fresher foods. Apparently, the person, it had to have been a staff member based upon how the thumbs down was written, but apparently offended the staff member and implied that, you know, they weren't working harder, they had plenty of equipment and time. That was not the intention. My intention was to question the director and ask if it was possible to, you know, invest in better foods if we have the equipment and the staff available. So I apologize if that was taken out of context. That's all I have.
I'll just jump in. I have one. I just want to, as I did last week, thank the candidate who showed interest in the opening board position. And as I thank Mary, who's here now, I'd like to thank her in person for stepping forward to fill in for five months. Thank you and welcome. Any other comments? Then we'll go to the business administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I submitted to you a relatively brief financial report. And as I mentioned to you last month, I'm trying to bring the numbers more current to when I actually give the report so that they're not so stale-dated. If I were to cut it at the end of the month, it would be, in some instances, three weeks after the fact. So I try to bring the numbers as current as I possibly can to give you a snapshot of what's going on in the district. There's a couple of areas I'd just like to point out to you. Total salary and benefits on the executive summary, it shows that we have approximately a balance of $408,000 after taking into account our year-to-date expenditures and our encumbered balance. However, approximately $200,000 of that, which is in the form of long-term substitutes and daily substitute rates, that will be expensed out if the trend continues for us to fully expend that appropriation. So we're really looking at approximately a $200,000 unencumbered balance right now for total salaries and benefits across the district. balance right now for total salaries and benefits across the district. That all-important health figure and dental, right now, we, we are fully encumbering expense for dental, actually, we're a little bit over to approximately two thousand dollars. But in our health, we have a, a unencumbered balance right now, projected around forty-eight thousand dollars for health insurance. But again, that's, that's two family plans. If we were to experience, a life experience change from one of our staff members to go from zero health up to a family, that would quickly erode that forty-eight thousand. Another area I'd like to point out of concern is our buildings and grounds. We have a, a balance, unencumbered balance right now of approximately three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. However, if you look over to the right, next to the buildings and grounds detail, under repairs and maintenance, we've, we've actually spent almost two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars across the district in repairs and maintenance already this year. We've encumbered, we have encumbered approximately seventeen thousand. At least it's about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars of unencumbered funds from now through the end of June. You've heard the story before, we'll, we'll continue to hold our breath. That preventative maintenance and holds everything in place, and we have no unexpected major repairs necessary for any, any of the buildings. And there's still some, we have to get through the winter season, which historically will, will bring some unanticipated repairs to the building. Transportation, which is in my narrative, vocational transportation, we are taking a look at right now. It, it appears that we're going to be substantially over budget in vocational transportation. I'll give you more detail to follow. We've had a series, Superintendent and I, a series of meetings with CHF as administrators. We need to take a look at, at current year vocational transportation costs projected out through the end of the year. We also have to take a look at what is in the budget for next year and see if there are some changes that can be made. You, you will see some changes, unfortunately, on the upward side. Part of the issue in vocational, we have more students that we're supporting in vocational ed. And the diff, the difficulty is trying to match up their schedules to transportation ability. Sometimes you have to reach out to multiple vendors, not dissimilar to special education when you have students going all over the place. We have vocational students going to three different locations right now, actually, four different locations. The other area of mild concern is, is the daily long-term substitute. Right now, this is, again, only after approximately thirty-some odd days of, of teaching days. We have already expensed thirty-six thousand dollars in our daily and long-term substitutes. So, that's, that's going to be something that we'll be closely monitoring at the central administration for you folks. Abbreviated report for me.
Excellent. Thank you. Chuck, can we send that to the Budget Committee?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, committee reports.
I'll jump in, I open. We had, just, just finished a meeting. We have a couple of video resources for eighth grade Spanish class. Probably more significantly, we started looking at the different assessments we use in the, across the district. Well, the next couple of meetings, we're going to be looking at those assessments, evaluating which ones work, which ones don't work. And maybe looking at, ultimately, those two, the ones we use.
Okay, so these are our minutes, so I haven't had a chance to talk to Dr. Has, did Kevin get us documentation and stuff to be able to take this vote?
He has had the conversations, he's not had the approval. So, if you take a vote tonight, it should have a caveat that, that says approve the change of the thirtieth building from educational to storage S-one pending necessary approvals. Or it could delay the vote, either one. He's met with, he, he, but he's not, I think he's, he's comfortable with where we are, but we don't have anything official in writing at this point in time.
Who does Kevin get approval from?
Fire Department, Fire Inspector. He's a building inspector, so he, he's, it's more or less on the fire side is, is where. He says it qualifies for the change from education to S-one on the building side, but it doesn't have, it has a fire system in there, fire alarms, but it doesn't have a sprinkler system. So, there's certain things that can go in there and certain things that can't go in there. So, I, I think as the, the board member that's part of that committee, I would encourage the board to wait for the approval before taking the vote. Just for, I mean, we're, we're meeting every week, so if it, if it occurs that we can very easily take a vote. We're meeting again on November fourth, so, as a committee, so we should be able to, the goal was to have it, to have it in place for the board to vote by our next meeting, which is beginning of November, so. So, that would be my recommendation to the chair.
John, I have a quick question. Changing it to S-one, how difficult would it be to change it back afterwards if need be?
Well, it would be very simple to change it back. You're just going to have to fix the building.
Right.
At that point in time. I, I believe it's, I believe that's what would they, at that point in time, we would be required to bring it to code.
But it just, would it be simple enough to flip it back over if need be?
Well...
Well, bring up the code and...
Bring it up to code. Once you brought up the code, then the answer would be yes. The code would be, at that point in time, would be probably, you'd have, definitely have the sprinkler system, but I guess at the same time, you would have to have, to deal with any asbestos issues that may...
But it's just, we, we, going through this formality of changing it from educational to storage, I don't know if in reverse it was just as easy to do.
It's probably not because it needs more...
Aside from the repairs would be necessary.
To change it to use change, get back to school building...
Yep.
Is, is a simple process. Process to, to utilize it as a school building...
It's not.
Would be an entirely different process.
Again, it's a simple process, but expensive.
Right. Call it a school building again is...
Well, yeah, no.
Yeah, they call it a school building.
Simple process to call it and get it coded as a school building.
Right.
Using it. An expensive process to actually...
Very expensive, right.
Was that it, Chuck?
That was all.
Excellent. So, I'll bring this to new business. Budget presentation for special services, requested budget. Now to you.
Okay, so I did just a budget summary of any account that was up or down by fifteen hundred, if that would be helpful. So, I created this budget, obviously taking into account the, the students that I know about at this point in time, and projecting what the students' needs may be for next school year. I also took a look at sort of where we need to go as a special education department moving forward, and included those things as well. So, I'll talk about those as, as we're going through. So, would it be easier for me just to talk about the up and down fifteen hundred, or would you like to go page by page? I would say fifteen hundred is easier than page by page myself. Okay.
So, I'm doing it in order, page by page.
Yeah, I've looked... Is it in order of the... The only, the only one that's not in order is the, the last one, because I didn't have the page, which is two seventy-two. So, I can do, I'll do that one first, and then I'm going to go up to the top. Does that work?
Yep.
Okay. So, the one that's listed on the bottom is, oh, there's, there should be thirty-five thousand. Thirty-five thousand, and that's, that's a huge increase. But the reason that the funding, that I put the funding in there is, number one, we really need to look at continuing the math and reading training for our special education staff in those specialized reading programs. And currently, I don't really have funds available to do so, to be able to say, hey, there's this certification in a particular reading program, there's a training in a particular reading program, and to be able to send them. For example, one of the reading programs that I know about to have one person certified is between two thousand and twenty-five hundred. So, there's ten thousand allocated for that. It means that there's going to be, you know, not everybody that we have, but certain staff in each of the buildings would be trained in particular on intervention, programmings, and approaches. The second piece to that is funding to have staff obtain additional certifications. It's really important in terms of, of what we do when we're looking at eligibility, is having staff that are qualified in specific learning disabilities, in emotional disturbances, in intellectual and developmental disabilities. And those are frankly certifications that you don't necessarily see when we post for applicants. You see, you see staff that have general special ed, elementary ed, and don't really see those advanced certifications coming through.
Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have consistently advertised special education positions at all three schools as LD or EH preferred.
Looking for those, and we just don't have them. So, right now, I happen to have specific learning disability certifications, so on top of what I need to do in my job, I sit in as the LD specialist in a lot of the meetings at the middle school and any other school that needs somebody to sit in. Because there's certain requirements that we have to abide by when we're looking at eligibility for students.
So, I'm sorry, which line item are you discussing?
I am discussing two seventy-two, which is conference workshop reimbursement. It's the very last one on my list.
Chuck Page, does I want to bring this?
It is... I have a separate printout because it wasn't in the original printout.
You would not have, you would not have that on your... Because it's part of the benefit, two thousand series...
Well, that's a different question.
She, Devin wanted to bring that up because it is such an effect, but you'll see it as part of the salaries and benefits because it comes under the training.
How many people are this training?
For the, the specific certifications?
Yeah.
I think we'd figured on bringing...
Two thousand to thirty-seven thousand.
Four or five?
So, we get five people for the thirty-five thousand?
Well, it's, it's, no, it's twenty-five thousand is what we have for the additional certifications, and then ten for the reading and math. What you were saying about the additional certifications was you were just talking about how you have to sit in because you're the only one with the appropriate. So, it's a big gap.
And the certifications come into play in delivery of services and writing of IEPs and all that thing as well. But in, in addition, it means that the few LD, is it LD cert we have, you and one or two other people in the district?
We have two other people in the district.
That's it. So, it comes into play in delivery of services, in quality of IEPs, in stretching the same people to run, you know...
We're making sure we have the right compositions and the right people looking at the evaluation information. And so, there's certain colleges out there that understand that there's a shortage area in these additional certifications, so they've created programs to establish cohorts with districts to try to keep the costs lower.
So, the people who are going to be taking this training, are they certified far enough along in their present career that taking, I mean, so they have all the building blocks that allow them to take this...
They have all the foundational pieces, so they'd be able to jump into...
To take this certification class, and then this would get them...
Well, it's multiple classes, so it's a series, and this one program is a series of six classes, which obviously they can't do in one...
Year. One year. So, so is this going to be an ongoing, is this, is this, so is this a...
I see it at least being a two or three-year process.
So, this is a, a personal investment into present employees of a substantial, substantial amount of money in their training? So, my question to you is, when we finish that obligation and all that training, what's the benefit to keep said employee at our district?
At this point, Mr. Cooper should be looking at me, but he's not. But that's okay. The question pertains to, so if we put in the budget, additional money's targeted to try and, and take more of our special education teachers who are special education general certification, and we actively recruit them and pay all of the costs for them to fast-track additional certifications. In business, the appropriate step would be to put a clause in their contract that says if they leave early, they have to reimburse us for that. Now you know why I was trying to get your attention.
I think that's a loaded question if you ask.
It wasn't a question, it was just a, I just didn't want you to miss this part and have to play it on the tape.
Thank you.
Common practice is, that's common practice in business, it's not common practice in education. And what we've, we've indicated is that, you know, the hope is that if we produce five people, we'll have at least three for the longer term. Don't know the legality of putting a rider like that on this, although it is a separate contract. We could speak to Solesley Kidder to see their take, and then, of course, the LEA would have a position on it as well. I don't think it's common in education.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a substantial investment so that you're taking somebody whose skills are worth X amount of dollars today in one year, two year, or three years, however long it takes the process to occur. You know, their investment in the, in the game is time, because they don't have any economic investment in it, they have their time invested in it, that, you know, they now are, are certified and, and, you know, somebody comes knocking on their door and says, hey, hey, we want to pay you X plus Y now that you have this. So, I, I, you know, it's something that I would like to have a little better understanding on. I would imagine that there's another group of people that may want to ask the same question. So, I think we need to have a little bit more homework on, on that, on that process. I mean, I understand the reasoning and, and the, and the process. I mean, you know, the key is, is, you know, you don't want to get known as a district that's doing all the training. You know, come to Litfield, get trained, and, and, you know, I mean, that, which is great, because hopefully then we get, we get good employees along that, that process. But at the same time, we want, we would like them to, you know...
Well, along those same lines, John, you could also have five people who would stay within district and would be beneficial to the district.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think everyone goes out there and tries to better themselves in order to leave. It's not to say that there's a percentage of people that wouldn't. It's no different than working in this district as a teacher for five years than saying, you know what, I've done it for five years, and I have that on my belt now, I can go on to a different district. It pays a little better.
I also think, I mean, I think that's an important consideration for sure, but at least, I mean, whether this is the right amount or some other amount is, I think the investment in keeping, having more people who have the right certifications, knowledge requirements, et cetera, to make sure that we provide the services that are required, that we're, you know, meeting all the expectations, because I think we have a bit of a history of some challenges in that area. And it's, I think, our responsibility to make sure we don't go down that path again, and we make sure that Devin and the district and our students all have what they need.
And rather than being the district that educates and then sends them off, I'd rather be known as the district that educates in order to maintain and, and better us as a district.
I like to think that we have staff that looks at professional development as a good thing, and we want to stay around because we're helping either. On the flip side, it is always a concern. Just at work, we had someone that we trained for two days and they left like two months later. I mean, it happens, but for the most part, you, if you invest in your employees, they, they tend to stick around.
Devin, have you already pinpointed the people that would go through this training?
No, no. Haven't even had the, my first tackle was to see if we can get the funding and then, you know, figure out who's interested and, and get the ball rolling so that...
There is a mechanism for them to do this now, but it's the three hundred and sixty dollars per LEA, full-time LEA member that we, that as part of the contract, we give that goes into a pool to be used for, you know, graduate credits and things like that. But it means that most people are guaranteed one course a year. Sometimes you can get partial, or maybe if it's a small pool that year, reimbursement for two. We have a short-term need, we've had it for a while, the strategy of recruiting hasn't worked. And so, this is a strategy basically to accelerate that piece. And to some extent, it comes down to the old HR argument of, you know, one side saying, what happens if we invest in our people and they leave, and the other side saying, what happens if we don't invest in our people and they stay?
So, they, just carrying on on what, on what Brian's question was to Devin, if we haven't identified the people, because I asked the question, did, are there people that already have the qualifications to take this training, and I was told there was, now just, I, I think I heard that we didn't have the people identified. So, how do we know this is the proper amount of money for what everybody needs? Or is it just a block, if you work block grant? Or is it just a block, I do report block grant, but it seems like it's just a grant and then we'll figure out how to use it once we get it, rather than this is what we need for, for, for this year, we, we have these five, six, however many people it are, and we want them to take these, this, this training, we've had the conversations with them, they're committed to it, and now it's in the, in the budget. It sort of, it sort of thinks that, I, I sort of think that that's the, the process that we would be looking to do, rather than just taking open amount of money.
So all that, I go back to what I said earlier, all the staff has the foundational, no matter, no matter who it is.
No matter who they are.
And many of the staff members, multiple staff members at each of the buildings has expressed interest in wanting to obtain further certification.
Okay.
I think that, obviously, we can't do everybody at once, it would be very costly.
Right.
So I think that, in my mind, it's going to be similar to when they're requesting funding, they're going to submit their requests, and it'll go through an approval.
So, so basically, first in, first approved, you're going to get the training, and, and once the money is used, it's used for the year, and you get in earlier the next unit. But I guess my question would be, is if you start a group of people in that process, would you not want to keep that people in the process, so that, you know, the people who applied that got approved this year for whatever the reasons they were, they would be the ones that as long as, as long as they're successfully completing the work, then they, they should be the ones that continue, and the ones that for every reason didn't, or are still trying to get in that process, they wouldn't be able to jump in front of somebody just because they turned in paperwork sooner or something like that? Is that the thought process that...
And my thought process is, is that for next year's budget, when we're looking at this again, I'll know exactly how many are in there, and if, let's say all the slots are filled, I know who is still interested, and then can, can make a plan for that second cohort, so to speak, going through.
And I think we fully expect that there will be some priority items, so for example, we do have an LD specialist at the elementary school, I don't believe we do at the middle school.
We don't at the middle school.
So, if we can find, so we will have priorities to fill the most, the neediest gaps, and then, you know, once we get to lay the land on that, then I'm sure Director Bandowski will be able to make the best utilization based on the staffing needs that we have. And then we'll have, as she says, a, you know, a pretty much to the dollar plan for the second year and the third year.
Are there any additional questions with that, or can I move on?
What's up?
Okay. So hopefully, in the packet that you have, page one, the very top activity, professional services, 330, is what you see?
Yep.
Yes. So there is a $46,000 decrease in that line, it's just change in services, the student age out, so there's not as many services listed in there. You go down to the next one, 332, tutoring services, there's an increase of $11,416. We have students providing tutoring during extended school year, and we also knew this year, it's the first time for us in Litchfield, is we have students attending charter schools and under the IDEA regs, we're responsible for, for continuing to provide the special ed services that are listed. So that was an additional cost that we don't have in, so I had to find the funds, so I wanted to make sure that it was reflected in the budget for next year. Next one down, 569, handicapped tuition, it's an increase of $50,000. We just have students at different schools, which costs a little bit more, so that's the figure that we have. Last year, we did have that huge decrease in the, out of district tuition, so, you know, we're back up by 50. 641, textbooks new, an increase of $2,500. It's looking at a curriculum, I'll go through the appropriate process and make sure that it's vetted, but we really need to look at adopting a preschool curriculum. We have the preschool outcome measurement survey, which is called PALS, it's sort of our, the data that we submit to the state, that's part of our report card, so to speak. So every district is required to use one of two assessments, we use the TS Gold for progress monitoring for our preschool students, and so we'd be looking to make sure that the curriculum that we choose lines up with the TS Gold, because that's the measurement tool that we're using, and that it's also aligned to the New Hampshire Early Learning Standards, so we'll be going through that, that process.
The textbooks, again, shouldn't they be district-wide?
For preschool.
Yep. If they're new texts, are there the 341 line?
641.
641, right?
Did they go?
Yes, actually Julie mentioned that to me today, that she needed to touch base with you on that and make sure that they go through the perk process.
Yeah, it will, yes.
Not the perk process.
Right.
Julie purchasing process.
So it would, the answer to your question would need to go up district-wide?
Right, so we come out of your budget.
Move that one budget.
As with all of the others.
All the district-wide?
They should be moved to the district-wide 641 line.
Right. Just to catch up on 641, we've moved all the books, because Julie seemed to be very little better at negotiating bulk purchases.
Oh, perfect, okay.
And so that all the books have gone to her, and then they'll get back out to the schools.
Yep.
But the budget there will be there for her to purchase and stuff.
Elect it and allocate it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on to page two, 734, additional equipment. We're looking at vision equipment for visually impaired student, then also two iPads, I believe, are in there, student-specific. 738, replacement equip, equipment, we're looking...
Sorry, Devin, can you back up for a minute?
Sure, sure.
If my recollection's from last, from last year, did we not already purchase, do we buy these every year, like large screen laptops and cameras?
Different student, we had it in there last year, but I believe it was at the middle school level. This is at GMS. Where was I, 730?
You're on 738, before I interrupt it.
Oh, it is on...
Page four.
44.
Yep.
Got it, okay, so, replacement equipment is an FM system, and we replaced 12 laptops for special education case managers at the end of last year, so we need to rotate in and make sure that we replace the remaining ones that they have, so a couple different spots, you'll see laptops for case managers. They were, the ones that they're currently using were purchased, I think, back in 2010, 11 with our funds, so they're getting to the point where they're kind of dying. So I wanted to make sure that we're kind of, we have it in here, being proactive about it.
So why are we buying another printer? Why can't they use all the existing printers in the building?
This particular printer, if I recall correctly, is e-print capable for the iPads that we have, so when the students are using the assistive technology components of it, they're able to print what it is that they're typing, and right now, they can't do that on the existing printer that we have.
It's probably true, because I came to it at home, and it makes me angry.
I had to get a special one for home. Let's see, 641, textbooks new, it's a decrease of 16,000, because in this current budget, we had budgeted for some reading intervention programs, so obviously, we don't need to repurchase them, so there's a decrease there. 734, there's a decrease of 5,000.
That's another line item that you should move to Julie.
Oh, for any future?
That, shouldn't that whole line be moved, even though it's a decrease? To Julie?
Yep.
Oh, so it comes out completely?
All 641s lines should, should go to, to, when they come back to us in the superintendent's budget or as we review them, 641s for individuals should be zero, and Julie should look, however it should look, very expensive, yes.
It's going to look bad for her.
It's not going to be good for Julie.
All right, I'll make that note. The 734, the decrease of the 5,000, 714, that was in reference to the equipment that was purchased last year, so obviously, there's no need for it, so it was taken out. 738, again, for the middle school, an FM system, and replacement laptops for three case managers at the middle school. 650 software, this is a Campbell line, it's on page...
Devin, can we just go back one second, I just have a quick question.
Sure.
On the equipment replacement, brother wireless printer?
Yeah.
Is that student-specific?
It is, well, there's students that have iPads that are using the assistive technology, and they're not able to print, so...
Just trying to head up a question from the IT director, because I know how he is about standalone printers.
Let's see, where was I? 650 software, that's a $5,000 increase. In that line, there is a site license for read and write gold at the high school level. This is assistive technology software with many capabilities, things can be scanned in, and then it reads it to the student. It also has the, a writing component, so they can talk in, the program can help them write, along with many, many other features. This software is being supported at the college and university level, so when you talk about transitioning, getting the students acclimated to this software system that's going to help them as they transition, so it not only helps them in high school, but then they also have learned the platform when they're transitioning to colleges and universities. To purchase one individual use of this, to put on one computer, is $645. So when you look at the, you know, the number of laptops that we have and computers in the school, to me, it was, it was much more cost-effective to purchase the site license, so we have the ability to put it on all of the computers that are in the resource room here at the high school, the laptops that we have. But it's just an important piece of, of assistive technology in terms of executive functioning for the students here to be able to succeed in their classes.
For students with learning disabilities, or for students with accessibility issues?
It's, it, for many students, so it could be accessibility students, it could be students that are significantly below grade level in reading, it can be for students that just don't have that, the, the planning and the organization with it, so it helps many students. Let's see. Next one...
733.
733, fireproof filing cabinets for the high school, we need them for special education files.
So how, how long, how long do you have to go back on those?
We have to keep them for seven years.
But they're only here for four?
Right, so once they, once they graduate, but you have to think that all of the records for any student that was ever eligible comes up here, when they would be in high school, so we have all, we have inactive files, we have files for current students, and then...
So is it, is it seven years?
From '21.
So why don't we, why don't we get rid of their elementary stuff and their middle school stuff? Why do we have to continue to keep that stuff if you only have to keep the last, the high school in the, for three additional years after they leave?
Because it has to be a comprehensive special education record, from the time they were first found eligible until they exited.
So it's more than seven years then?
It's more, by the number of files, I mean...
So it's seven years beyond...
That's the retention after they depart.
That's retention, that's correct.
That the retention from when they depart here is seven years.
It could be 19 years with, yeah.
Yes.
So what we do, you might see it posted, every year, we put something in the paper saying that if you graduated, honor before, blah, 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 we give them a timeframe to come and collect their, their files, and then if they don't, then we destroy them appropriately in the right way.
And 99.9% of the time, they sit dormant?
They do not come in.
But I was involved at one point with a court case where a student wanted to access their special education files because they were pleading a diminished capacity defense. Interesting.
And you have to keep it all on paper, right?
So I was just going to ask, you can't scan and save?
All on paper for right now, it'd be great if we can move towards a online database. Yeah, but, um...
How many file cabinets is that, are you purchasing?
It is three. They're fireproof.
How many do you have now?
So it's like 1,300-ish for one.
How many do you have now?
There are... I think there are five fireproof, there's a couple other in the room, but I don't think they're fireproof.
So, why do they have to be fireproof, out of curiosity? Because we're talking about storage at GMS without sprinklers, because of low fire potential, yet when, these are in like $1,300 file cabinets.
The records aren't destroyed?
Well, they're going to be, they would be heading to GMS, so, um, so being in a fire-protected file cabinet, it may be a good idea, because they don't have a sprinkler system around them, but, but we don't have any cabinet, any of these file cabinets with stuff that's retiring that we can still use?
We have, all the ones that are up there are full, and I've been up there and in them looking for files, and they're full from, from top to bottom.
So you potentially could have like hundreds of file cabinets?
And they don't even...
Well, no, you could get to a point where you finally are at that seven years, and there'll be a filing cabinet that you empty, and then you can refill it back in, so, but we're not at that process, I think.
Especially if you look at our graph of identified students, we're, we're going to...
It's going to be years, it's going to be years before you chuck any hats up.
Well, it's 20, you know, you, anything that's going in right now, I mean, you'd have to go back to, the stuff they could throw away now would be 2007, is that correct?
No.
No.
Well, if they graduate in 2007.
Yeah, 2007, you could, you could be moving that along.
Yeah, but you still have 20 years behind that, too.
But those could be gone, those could be gone, those should all be gone.
Graduation records themselves have to be kept.
But aren't they separate from this file?
They are, but in, in general, given the number of additional students that we've identified from our past.
Is there any way that you can digitally save the files and save the space?
That's what, that's what I'd like to explore further, is being able to have a digital record, because that will help us in the, in the long term, but coming up with a process and the time it would take to scan.
Well, you need to be able to, you need to be able to scan them from your printer. You need to have a, a printer that's, I mean, you know, law offices, I know, are really using those things at this point in time, but, you know, we do it with our machines, people come in, and we just, they'll bring us a stack of documents, and they want, want them scanned and other copies of it, we'll scan them in, and then we can make a digital file of them. You know, the problem I have with that is that, that they end up saving both of those, you know, they're afraid. They're afraid, and, and, uh...
Want to buy them fireproof cabinets, and won't have to worry about it.
Well, that, you know, but I, for, for $4,000, you could set up a very good digital process and never have to have another file cabinet, and you could get rid of the file cabinets that you have. And, and so, my recommendation would be to, not to add more to your plate, but in the next 30 days or so before this goes to the budget committee, to be able to work with Kyle on that process. I mean, I, I think the machine you guys have back there in the SAU office is pretty fancy. I would imagine that it can scan, and, and it's, it's just a matter of, of getting an intern or somebody in there that can be doing that process.
Can you legally destroy the paper and just have it file?
As long as we have a record.
So it doesn't have to be paper?
And you could start with...
Once they've, they've graduated or aged out, you can have a...
So you could, yeah, so you could start with the older, the, the students that have graduated, start scanning their stuff in, creating, then, then creating a room in those filing cabinets for the, for the newer students.
We're probably talking more than 4,000, at least to get started, I bet, just the, the labor, because we're not going to do ourselves, to hire somebody, come in and scan it all, it's going to be more than 4,000.
The storage isn't free.
We looked, we looked into this at 44, and it is very expensive. Manpower, I mean, we don't, I, I can speak for Devin, but I'm not sure she has the manpower to commit to that project. The project is substantial, I don't know where her records are, but to bring somebody in, to scan all those documents, to become fully digital in your, in your filing system for any, it's, it's rather pricey upfront, there's some, there's some substantial upfront cost, and then to maintain it, and then to make sure that you've got somebody that's going to constantly update those, it's, it's, it would be, well, it's no different, the case managers would then be doing everything on, on a digital file. I mean, you, everything would, everything needs to move with that, and they can't be And they can't be creating a paper trail now. If you've moved to, if you're moving to a digital process, then with these laptops, the case managers need to move to a digital process. So your forms need to be...
Well, you have to wait till they graduate, you said.
No, but, but, well, you still...
Starting it earlier, so by the time they...
No, but I mean, I mean, if you're keeping everything on a digital, digital process, I would imagine that that's, I mean, as long as you can print it out, I believe that that, that's probably acceptable. I mean, I don't believe that the law mandates that everything has to be a hard copy while they're in high school.
You have their original signatures.
But can't you scan that? Well, you just keep the one page then. It'd be much less than, you know. When you, what, when you say originals, when you say original signatures, is that the original signature that starts the IEP and then everything else is all that? Or is that, anytime a document is signed, you have to have original signatures?
We keep all the originals, every meeting. We keep the originals, parents get a copy. And that becomes their permanent...
So it's like a two-part form? That people are signing it and you're keeping a copy and the parents are keeping a copy?
They sign it. You make a copy, give them the copy, and keep the original in the files. What I can do is I'll have a conversation with Kyle and I can also put out to other districts to see if there's any districts right now that are currently using...
Just electronic.
Yeah. Do, do SIS systems have, does any of the student information systems have like a module for tracking these documents that we could take advantage of later?
Not that I know of. I worked on a project when I was in Nashua to try and, and have IEPs sent as PDFs to districts that used Fall at Aspen and that we could upload them. So in the new student information system, all the teacher had to do was to go into the roster, press a button, and it would show up. But that's, you know, that's the closest parallel.
And I, I guess in today's age where even mortgage companies have moved to scan documents being okay, and fax documents being okay for signature, is it a...
They'll send you the big one off.
Is it a, is it a state, is it a state law that's mandating original signatures? Or an RSA, or is it just something we decided that that makes everybody feel...
No, I don't know exactly where it comes from, but I can look into it.
Okay.
To see exactly what, what it stipulates.
I mean, the only thing, I mean, I understand there's gonna be costs in this, but, but I, but at the same time, you know, next year, if you come back and you need three more, for whatever the reason is, based on the way that we're, you know, we finally have our hands on, around the program and we're doing everything correctly in that process, we're going to have a similar amount of, of students in the program. So your use in the filing cabinets is not going to get less, it's only going to continue to expand. And so I, I think that this is, this is an opportunity to, to take a look at the process that can be, that can be used.
I agree.
And again, I mean, I don't know how big the file is or stuff, but, you know, yearly storage on a cloud is not as expensive as...
Six forty-ones.
You know, the secure cloud is not really as expensive as it thinks. Much cheaper than four thousand dollars on this.
Okay, I will look into that. All right. Moving on, page seven, seven thirty-four, additional equipment. We're looking at the assistive technology that the high school students have access to at this point. So they're requesting iPads to do that, to have students be able to access it with the, the number of applications, book share.
Right.
Things that, that students could have in front of them in class to make the curriculum accessible. So that's the request there. Seven thirty-eight is...
Can I ask you why a high school student needs to be taught how to use a microwave?
We have life skills room over here at Campbell, and so it's for students that are here until they're twenty-one, they work on functional life skills. And the microwave we have in there is on its way out, so we're replacing it.
It's a decrease.
It's part of their daily programming. Let's see, seven thirty-eight FM system. We have quite a few FM systems. You can see there's three request forms that are on the older end of things, so we need to make sure that we have the funds to replace those. And again, replacement laptops for case manager. Seven thirty-eight, this is school psychology line. And it's, again, two laptops for the school psychologists.
Devin, does Kyle agree on all the laptop replacements? Does he have a role in assessing?
Yeah, he, this is the information. He was part of when we purchased the twelve for that, at the, the end of last year, so he was part of all of that. And five nineteen, transportation. An increase there, I know it's your favorite line to look at. But again, it's based on student need, the students that I have right now, we have different schools in the mix, it's, it changes. So what's in there is what I know about it this very second. We could have a different need tomorrow. I can tell you, I know one of the things that Mr. Spencer has asked is, you know, the in-district bus has been able to do one of the runs to one of our out-of-district placements in the past. And I know I've said in the past that at some point, they may not be able to do it, and we hit that point this year. So we had to pull the in-district bus back in, so we have another bus company that's doing that. And so that's why it's, it's budgeted for, so it doesn't become a, we don't have the funds type of scenario. Again, you know, these are, what it would cost for a bus if our student was the only student on the bus, because we don't know what other districts are gonna have students on the buses. So it helps us cost-wise if we end up sharing a bus. We have some kids that share buses with other students, but in terms of planning, I, I just, I don't know that information. So if we end up with our student is the only one, it's gonna be a more expensive bus ride, the, the cost that you see in front of you.
And we don't know when that changes. It was, I think it was last year that we were, we had three students on the same bus and we got a phone call on Wednesday saying, by the way, a student in another district is aging out. You're now going from paying a third of the bus ride to a half on twenty-four hour notice.
So it can be that, that quickly? I mean, there's no honor among these to, to at least give you a, enough notice that this has occurred?
I'm not bringing that argument back to you folks if it's, we have the student who's aging out.
We have, there could be a situation where a student moves, which we had last year with some of our out-of-district placements. So that's why we were sort of under in terms of, of spending for transportation. But that could happen for us, it could happen for the other districts that's sharing the bus. So if their student moves, they're not gonna continue to pay for the half of the bus that they're paying.
So there, is it, so it's a commitment, so if the student, it's, it's, so it's not a daily commitment. So if they've committed to using that bus, whether the student is on the bus or not, they're still committed to whatever payment of that bus is until they say, we're no longer using the bus. So it's not a, if somebody's out sick, it's not like...
No.
They're not paying their part of the bus that day.
No, just like us. If we have a student that's out sick for any duration of time, we're still paying.
Paying, because we're committed, we've made a commitment to that.
Yes, absolutely.
It's actually, the, the twenty thousand is actually less than the fifteen percent increase, so I'm assuming the services actually went down?
Well, this, this would be a five percent increase for this budget year.
It's, oh, this past year.
We absorbed the fifteen percent.
Yeah, but it still wasn't five percent.
Right, it's, it's still represents a five percent increase, correct.
So when we, you know, I looked at what we have encumbered so far this year and, you know, there, there's one other thing that's not currently encumbered, but if I take that into account, we're down already to about seventy-nine thousand not encumbered. So, I mean, that's, you know, a, a student, a change in cost sharing and then another student going out and it being a forty thousand dollar process, I mean, it goes quick, so.
So you basically have about a sixty-five thousand dollar, no, it says forty-nine, but when we take the line six forty-one out, you got a, a great savings on one, so, so it's about a sixty-five thousand dollar increase on the budget for, for special services. Is that...
But it would go, it would show up in Julie's budget.
No, no, I under, no, no, I understand that, but, but...
Yes.
About sixty-three.
Of which most is tuition?
What was that?
Of which most it looks like is tuition.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, tuition in bus.
Given that we're, this is the only budget we're looking at tonight, I just asked Mr. Burke if he would mind, since Director Benduski is here, may want to actually take a vote on a, you know, if you feel you have time to look over this. We usually don't make very many adjustments, if any, to special education. I don't believe we have made any in the two years that I've been here. But if you're thinking about requesting any reductions, it might be better to have those conversations tonight and potentially a vote tonight, just a suggestion. As opposed to coming back in two weeks and having it without Director Benduski here.
Well, you know, we always get in trouble when we vote on the same day. Inevitable.
I think if there's one budget that's pretty safe to vote on, it's, this is probably it. If you, if you don't have any questions at this point in time, or if there's not any specific things...
You know, there really is, I mean, the tuition, all this mandated, we could haggle with the transportation numbers, but we can leave that to the budget committee, because we know where they're going to anyway. It, it comes down to the thirty-five thousand for the training and I'm okay with that, so.
So I'll make a motion to approve the budget I submitted for the special services.
Can you still look into like the possibility of, as far as changing files away from paper?
Yes, absolutely.
I understand that, I mean, one or the other, it's probably gonna cost that anyway, I mean, probably more than that.
These are the first year, the second year go down, but the first one's probably more than that.
I'm sure that...
I have that on my list, so I got, gathered together that information.
Any other conversation? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero zero. Thank you, Devin. What's that?
Said that they're only, they were all that easy.
Still gotta go to the budget committee.
Next week's will. Or hopefully. Give you a chance to talk to Devin about that issue before she hits a hallway conversation. Thank you, ma'am. Much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Devin and I were reminiscing today about where we were two plus years ago and where we are now, and I have to say, it's been, it's been one of the more satisfying bits of work of, of my career. I think we're in a significantly better place and we have a lot of people who work very, very hard at all three buildings and at the district level. But no one, I think, deserves more credit than Devin.
I've never heard anything but good things about her.
Absolutely locked in when we heard her.
That brings us to any old or unfinished business?
No.
Listen back there, were we gonna have a discussion about them or put that off?
I was just gonna ask whether or not Doc Cockman was able to acquire any numbers for us. As far as participation in the three different schools?
Oh, no, I did not. I apologize. I've, that, I had it in my notes at the meeting, but I did not look it up. And Barbara's been away. She would be the only person who would have access to it.
Can we possibly have those for next week and then have a discussion and possibly hold on it?
She's back in the office next Monday.
Understandable.
Michelle, if you could make a note for me as well.
I think I'd still like to see those numbers, like John had mentioned, before I make a decision one way. Any questions on the manifest aside from the one that we can't sign?
First one we not sign?
Huh?
I'm thinking it may be in one or the other, the BMO.
Any questions on the manifest? That brings us to public input. Public input. I'm trying to talk, we sat there too late.
You're even ahead of, Michelle's like...
See what happens when I come back? I wasn't paying attention, what was that?
He's even ahead of your...
I know, he is, it's great, that's because we didn't do salaries a bit of that.
And if you don't have any non-public business, you could do the...
And no community input. Pretty lucky.
We've even done that much quicker.
We will have one, yeah. So we went to non-public session. RSA ninety-one dash A semicolon three one one. The dismissal of motion or compensation of any public employee or disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him unless the employee affected, one, has the right to a meeting, and two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. B, the hiring of any person or public employee. C, matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of the person, other than a member of the body or agency itself, unless such a person requests an open meeting.
Second. You had all these seconds that I have.
Mary?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Yes. Now we're not public.